The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Weyburn City Council held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM here Monday, April 25, 2022. The first item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting held April 11, 2022. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, your worship. No additions from administration tonight.
Counsel? Seeing no additions, moving forward. There's no public hearings and notices. The first delegations and proclamations and petitions, we have the proclamation of the day of mourning. Every year, more than 1,000 Canadian workers are killed on the job, and whereas thousands more are permanently disabled, and whereas hundreds of thousands are injured, and whereas thousands of others die from cancer, lung disease, and other illness caused by exposure to toxic substances at their workplaces. And whereas April 28 of each year has been chosen by the Canadian Labour Congress as a day of mourning for these victims of workplace accidents and disease, a day to remember the maximum sacrifice they have been forced to make in order to earn their living, a day to renew approaches to governments for tougher occupational health and safety standards and more effective compensation, and a day to rededicate ourselves to the goal of making Canada's workplaces safer. And whereas April 28 was proclaimed a day of mourning by an act of parliament on February 1, 1991. So I, Mayor Marcel Roy of the city of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim April 28 as an annual day of mourning in recognition of workers killed, injured, and disabled on the job. Just as a note, way back in the days of the Civil War days in the northern factories, the average age of death was said to be around 20 or 21 for a lot of the workers in the factories. We have moved forward a lot. There's still much work to do, but we must move, keep, continue to move forward, and this is the importance of this day of proclamation. There. Pass that out. The next proclamation comes from the Mental Health Awareness Week. Whereas Mental Health Week is an annual public education campaign designed to encourage Canadians to learn, talk, reflect, and engage with others on the importance of mental health. And whereas mental health is not just the absence of mental illness, mental health is about finding a balance of all aspects of your life, socially, physically, spiritually, economically, and emotionally. There is no health without mental health. Whereas the Canadian Mental Health Association of Weyburn is committed to the mental health of our community. We want our families, friends, and neighbors to have the same opportunities breaking down barriers of mental health and mental illness by offering support and programs. Please visit www.weyburn.cmha.ca. Therefore, now I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of Weyburn, do hereby proclaim May 2 to the 8, 2022, to be Mental Health Week in Weyburn, and I urge all citizens to take part in events to celebrate this week. I will sign this, and then I'll have Tasha Collins to please say a few words. If you would please step up.
Thank you to the council and to Mayor Marcel Roy for having us, or for having me today. For this proclamation, this year's Mental Health Week, CMHA's are asking people to hashtag #GetReal about how to help, related to the theme of empathy. Sometimes the best way to help is to make people feel seen and heard. Remember, if someone is struggling, you don't need to solve their problems. Understanding can be helpful and a solution on its own. We may be different, but that doesn't need to make us rivals. We encourage everyone to bring empathy alive with the people in our lives. Be there, listen completely, and see the world through their eyes is how we can really help. CMHA has a few events scheduled during Mental Health Week this year. Our Mayor's Luncheon on May 3 with guest speaker Lauren Cole. She will be sharing some of her talents along with her story, her mental health story, and some tools that assisted her along her way. And then we also have a vocal performance by a local ensemble. Our used book sale is May 4 and 5 from 10 to 3, and that's supported by Blue Earth Environmental, with all proceeds donated to the CMHA Weyburn branch. And we are also launching Mental Health Initiative, Creating Connection, on Monday, May 2. Through this initiative, we are providing green door hangers to each home and asking our community to raise awareness and support mental health by placing those door hangers on their front doors during Mental Health Week from May 2 to 8. The door hanger serves two purposes. First, to provide everyone with the list of resources, and secondly, to take an active role in raising awareness and the profile of mental health in our community. The CMHA Weyburn branch and the Weyburn Police Service collaborated for this initiative with the goal of creating connections, connecting to community, connecting to resources, connecting to neighbors, and connecting to mental health in general. We certainly encourage everyone to participate in the events and look forward to seeing all the door hangers hung up throughout the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have the Mayor's Luncheon, May 3, that we're going to be attending, so thank you. Moving forward, reports on standing committees, the Police Commission, Mr. Van Betje.
Thank you, your worship. First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge that our chief of police is here today, and he is a sitting board member of the Canadian Mental Health Association, so I'd like to thank him for doing that. A regular meeting of the Weyburn Police Board Commission was held in the Administration Boardroom at 4:00 PM Tuesday, April 19, 2022. Minutes for the previous meeting were accepted and passed. Correspondence, the board received City of Weyburn 2023 budget timelines for preparation, submission, and presentation to City Council. Chief London inquired what items the board wanted to see in the capital budget. Mayor's report, Chief London presented the report for March 2022, which included the Weyburn Police Service monthly stats, the Weyburn Police Service seven-year average, medical health assist calls, community engagement, overtime report for 2021 for March, and then for the year-to-date. The accounts payable report for March was provided to the board. Barclay inquired about Golden West Broadcast invoice for $19,400. Chief London advised he was receiving, this was money he received from funding from SGI for an advertising campaign, which consists of working with the radio station for social media posts, Twitter, Facebook, and public service announcements on the radio, and will run from March to the year end. Chief London provided the final 2021 budget update. He then also provided a year-to-date budget report showing the actual versus the target budget comparison. These reports were received and accepted. Unfinished business, Chairman McCormick advised that 2022 CAPG conference is in Saskatoon in September and inquired of members who wish to attend in person or virtually. Chairman McCormick stated he would like to attend in person. Krista Hubig stated she would like to attend virtually, and Barclay, Charlton also wished to attend. There was no new business. Counselor Van Betje asked that the Police Commission move into closed session at 5:31. The commission moved out to close at 6:12, and the meeting was adjourned.
That will be placed on, received, and placed on our website. Consent agenda, Public Works Report, if we would have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion, your worship, that the consent agenda, Public Works Report for March be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Council payable, we would have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'll make a motion that the purchases of $495,840.89 from April 8 to April 21, 2022 be passed for payment.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. City of Weyburn Recycling Contract, Director of Engineering, please?
Yes, good evening. So the city of Weyburn is a regional urban center for many surrounding municipalities and operates as landfill as a regional landfill serving much of the surrounding area. The city of Weyburn implemented a citywide multi-material recycling program in 2017, providing recycle of waste packaging and paper for single-family and multifamily dwellings in accordance with the multi-material stewardship Western. The recycling program has deferred large amounts of recycled material from the landfill simple implementation in 2017 with curbside pickup and depots located around the city. GFL Environmental holds a current recycling program contract, which is up for renewal in June of 2022. The new contract term will be 4.5 years. It'll run from June 2022 to December 2026. On March 18, the citywide recycling contract was posted on SAS tenders on the city website. Bids were received to be by Thursday, April 14 at 1:00 PM, and a total of two proposals were received, and they're summarized below. So as you can see, they offer both curbside and depot. This was a condition, so you can see they're offering monthly all-inclusive costs, Goliath and GFL for the curbside and depots. All bids submitted were reviewed to ensure bidders submitted all response requirements, including a list of acceptable recyclable materials and monthly costs for both curbside pickup and depot drop-off locations. So both Goliath Disposal and GFL propose competitive monthly all-inclusive pricing to cover biweekly pickups for 3,495 curbside bins, which is what we currently have. And then Goliath is proposing no charge for their public depot location, which results with an overall lower monthly cost for each year of the contract, as well as Goliath has set for the next four and a half years, it would be the same, and GFL sees an incremental increase every year. So it is a recommendation that the 2022 to 2026 citywide multi-material recycling contract be awarded to Goliath Disposal as per the cost detailed and the conditions stipulated in the RFP.
Yeah, motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the proposal of Goliath Disposal to provide the city of Weyburn with citywide multiple material recycling for a term of June 2022 to December 31, 2026, with terms as set out in the proposal be accepted.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion.
Questions, discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Ryan.
Jennifer, I'm sure you've considered this, but just for our information, the bins themselves, are they property of the city or of the contractors?
They're property of the contractor, and this would mean having to have your bin picked up by GFL, and a new bin would be provided by Goliath.
Okay, and that is factored into the numbers in front of us?
Yeah, so they don't, the replacement of bin is at no cost.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thanks, worship. Jen, first off, kudos. You save us some money, and that's important, but we have other things to consider, and I just want to make sure. I know you've thought of all these, so I just want to get them out there. No interruption of service, the homeowners, we'll just put our bin out on Tuesday, no change, correct?
There will be no interruption to service as promised by both contractors.
Excellent. You used to take my excess cardboard to one location. I'll still have a spot to do that, but it won't be there. You'll communicate with us all where it goes going forward, but it'll be accessible 24/7?
Yep, absolutely. We will still have a depot location. It won't be in the same location, obviously, with a different contractor, but yet we will still have a location for residents to do so.
Do some public education around that. Finally, we always go back to our provider for lots of details. Tonnage that's going out, where it's going, are we getting the right things? Counselor Van Betje's talked in the past about wishful recycling. I think we're getting better at that. You expect that same level of communication from the new provider?
Yeah, Goliath had a very outlined plan, because that was part of the RFP in our communication with them, is that we would be requesting that of them, as well as that is a requirement for getting our recycling grant that we receive. So they're well aware of the requirements. They do it for other municipalities, and they are more than willing to provide all that information for us.
That's great. Thank you for your hard work on this.
Thank you, worship. But the city of Weyburn is very pleased, I think, and citizens of Weyburn should be pleased. We have two quality organizations, like Goliath and GFL, that can do recycling and garbage picking in the city of Weyburn. We are very fortunate. Other cities don't have that. So you have a fair tendering process. It is what it is. There's the numbers, we move forward.
When would this switch over if we were to vote for this tonight?
In June, yeah. So there would be, we would transition then, because the contract with GFL is up in June.
Other questions? Seeing all, none, all in favor? Carried unanimously. We will switch to Goliath then. The next paving, RFP, if you would, please?
Yep, so this would be the Weyburn asphalt RFP. We would be considering this number two, because we have already done one previously in the year. So the 2022 budget has allocated $700,000 for the infrastructure revitalization program for people that are new. That would have been what we used to call the local improvements plan, so this is what our new program. So the initial RFP for asphalt included three asphalt projects supported by this program, as well as some concrete work. And so that plan, we'd already allotted $380,000 of the budgeted amount. So this would be the remainder of the projects recommended under the infrastructure revitalization program. So part one is a milling and resurfacing on 4th Street South from 6th Avenue to 10th Avenue South. Part two is an excavation rebuilding of the basin and installing new asphalt at 4th Street and 80-meter section in front of River Park. And the third would be crack filling and pothole patching on primary and secondary streets across Weyburn. So this wouldn't be necessarily allocated to a specific location, but it would include multiple locations throughout the city. So on March 24, a request for proposal was posted on SAS tenders on the city website for the three parts listed above. Quotations were to be received by the city of Weyburn by April 14 at 2:00 PM, and a total of five proposals were received. Proposal submitter reviewed to ensure bidders understood the scope of work involved, met the RFP requirements, and to ensure the project delivery schedule could be met, and all five of the proposals below met the full requirements. And so you can see there are the five bids. And so this table just shows part one and two, and I'll explain that. So for part three below, contractors submitted proposals with various charge-out methodologies. These were evaluated based on the scope of work for a proper comparison. So we took these numbers based on what we had, or had done a review of the city of where we felt we had potholes and cracks that need to be filled, and took those numbers. So just to give you guys an idea, based on the bid for part one and two, the lowest contractor was ASL, so with taxed, about two, little over 220,000 would be added. And then that would bring the infrastructure revitalization spending to approximately 600,000, and that would leave an additional 100,000 for part three, which is the crack filling and pothole, to take up that whole 700,000. So, and that would be the maintenance on the primary and secondary streets. So we are recommending that parts one and two of the RFP be awarded to ASL paving for a total amount of $208,102 plus taxes, and then it is recommended that part three of the RFP be awarded to Jenco Asphalt for $5,850 per day for a crack filling crew and equipment, and $2.60 per liter for the volume of crack filling used, and then also for $760 per hour for a pothole patching crew and equipment, and 150 per ton for asphalt delivered. And these costs are before taxes.
Go ahead.
Thanks, worship. I'll make a motion that the 2022 Weyburn asphalt contracts be awarded as recommended to the following, part one and two to ASL paving limited in the amount of $208,102 plus taxes, and part three to be awarded to Jenco Asphalt as per their proposal.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Questions? I guess the one question I have is that, if you'd scroll up there, it's $750 a day for a pothole. With our new pothole machine, are we going to be, are they going to be doing that many potholes?
So our plan would be to focus mainly on crack filling. We wouldn't have as much pothole patching, because our plan would be to do as much in-house as we can.
Right, and have we ever looked at a crack filling machine, like I saw up at Suma there, to, so we reduce this $5,000 a day crack filling?
Yeah, so that's something that we're currently investigating is our, one, the cost of those machines, two, the capabilities in-house that we would have to run it, staffing levels to do that, as well as any, like what it would take for training, and what we would actually have to have for materials on site, because that's another piece to it, is do we have the setup for materials on site to do that? So it is currently something we're assessing versus using a contractor, but I don't have a defined answer for you yet.
But something for the future. Okay, thank you. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Moving forward, introduction bylaws, bylaw 2022-3443, base tax for 2022, Director of Finance.
Okay, so that bylaw, it's to establish the mill rate factors for classes and subclasses of property and to provide for base tax. So this is based on the budget and what we had budgeted for, for an increase of 4.58% on taxes overall. So this would be an increase in base tax of $40, and this covers our emergency services, our police, fire, and sand, and snow removal. And so it calculates out to an average home being an increase of about $80 per year. We also have the school, sorry, in the next bylaw, we have the school rates included. They went up slightly. The residential went up by .08 mils, and the commercial went up by .11 mils. So on the average home, the school rate would go up by about $20 per year.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2022-3443, a bylaw to establish mill rate factors for classes, subclasses of land and improvements, and to provide for a base tax of the city of Weyburn for 2022 be read a first time.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Go ahead.
Your worship, I'd like to make a motion that bylaw 2022-3443, a bylaw to establish mill rate factors for classes, subclasses of land and improvements, and to provide for the base tax of the city of Weyburn for 2022 be read a second time.
Worship.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Worship, a motion that bylaw 2022-3443, a bylaw to establish mill rate factors for classes, subclasses of land and improvements, and to provide for base tax of the city of Weyburn for 2022 be given three readings at this meeting.
Your worship, I will second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your worship, a motion that bylaw 2022-3443, a bylaw to establish mill rate factors for classes, subclasses of land and improvements, and to provide for the base tax of the city of Weyburn for 2022 be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I will also second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Bylaw 2022-3444, mill rate for taxation? Go ahead.
So this is just to set the uniform mill rate and to establish all the rates for each class.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2022-3444, a bylaw to fix rates for taxation for the city of Weyburn for 2022 be read a first time.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Go ahead.
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2022-3444, a bylaw to fix rates for taxation for the city of Weyburn for 2022 be read a second time.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2022-3444, a bylaw to fix rates for taxation in the city of Weyburn for 2022 be given three readings at this meeting.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously.
Your worship, I move the bylaw 2022-3444, a bylaw to fix rates for taxation for the city of Weyburn for 2022 be read a third time and passed.
I'll second this, all your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. So those two bylaws are passed. There's no unfinished business, new business, Fido's Place Contract Zone, if you would, please, Janine?
Yep. So a letter has been submitted to City Council with a request to waive the fees for a contract zone application for Fido's Place. So I've prepared a report. I will also note that the applicant is here tonight, so counsel can ask her questions at the end of this. I won't read the letter, she can speak to that. So in 2018, a contract zone was approved by City Council for 325 Queen Street to allow for Cindy Anne to develop Fido's Place Doggy Daycare and Training Center. The existing highway commercial zoning of the property did not allow for a kennel, so the contract zone allowed for that use as a permitted use. A contract zone is a type of rezoning, which requires that a contract agreement be entered into between the city and the property owner and the tenant in this scenario to allow for specific uses and/or regulations that do not apply in the original zoning of the property. That contract agreement is then registered on the title of the property. The contract zone was approved by council, and the agreement was for a three-year time period with an expiry date of December 31, 2021. Based on information from when the contract was originally approved, the three-year timeframe was assigned due to the term of Cindy's lease being for three years. In March 2022, Cindy Anne contacted the city about the expired contract, at which point she was advised that the contract could not be extended because it has expired and is no longer valid. Additionally, the new zoning bylaw and official community plan have been approved in 2020, and since the contract zone was initially approved under that bylaw, any new zoning bylaw amendments would have to be evaluated under the current bylaws in effect. Cindy Anne was advised that she would be required to go through the zoning bylaw amendment process for a new contract zone to be approved. She advised that she would request a waiver of fees from City Council before initiating the bylaw amendment process. A letter has been submitted to council with that request. Schedule A of the Planning Fees bylaw sets out all the fees for planning applications. The fees for a contract zone are $1,150 plus advertising costs. The bylaw does not contain a provision for waiving application fees. Given that the bylaw does not have the provision for waiving fees, staff would recommend that council deny the request to waive the application fees.
Did you wish to make any say anything? Go ahead.
Your worship, City Council, thank you very much for seeing me. Well, first of all, I did send a letter in asking for the extension, which was missed. I just assumed it would just be there as long as I was there. Bad on my part. So that's my first request, is if you can extend it, even though it was late. I did extend my lease, so begging for forgiveness, I guess. Other than that, do you have any questions? Like, nothing's changed. I'm on business, it's my fourth year. We're doing the same thing we've always done.
Questions for council? Go ahead, Mel.
I have a question more for Janine. So if the contract was missed, the date, and it had to be renewed after the date that it was passed, and the OCP hadn't changed, what would the process have been?
They would still have to go through the application process.
And the costs would all be the same regardless?
Yep.
And the cost would all be the same regardless of whether the OCP changed or not?
Yep. Our bylaw just says a zoning bylaw amendment application, yep.
Thank you.
Janine, just generally speaking, is this kind of contract within the original contract period normally extended if a request is received?
This is a bit of a unique one. We usually don't set a timeframe on these contracts. This particular case, it was likely done due to the lease. Typically, they're just between the property owner and the city. The city doesn't like to authorize things that a property owner hasn't authorized, so a three-year lease is what we would have tied that timeframe to. So, typically, they run with the property owner as long as they're operating that use on the property, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mickle?
Worship. Cindy, first of all, it's a beautiful place to have a dog park. You know that. When you first signed this contract three, four years ago, how much money did you pay?
About $2,000.
$2,000. And so, I guess the question, I think it was already raised already, if there's no OCP, under normal circumstances, expiry, there's still going to be a fee terms. Were you told that at all?
I don't recall.
I'm struggling with this.
I am too.
Oh, yeah, because business is business.
That's right.
And I'm not disputing what our city administration is doing. They're doing their work.
That's right.
And they're doing it in their property. However, that's a big chunk of change if nobody told you about it. That's where I'm concerned. I like the word compromise, if that's possible. We can't do it for nothing. We have people working too.
I understand.
But I think there's a process that maybe we could compromise and move on. And thanks for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
At that dog park.
Mr. Richard?
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks, Cindy Anne. My question also is kind of closer to Janine, I think. So, Cindy Anne has renewed her lease. It doesn't matter one, two, three, four, five years. We renew this. It would be tied again to that lease?
We wouldn't have to necessarily. We could look into an option as long as she's the tenant.
Okay.
Or as long as that use is there. Those are options.
Yeah, so I guess that was sort of, yeah, thanks for answering my quest, the question I wanted to ask versus the one I did. So, if Cindy Anne sells the business, this agreement would transfer?
Yeah, we'd likely have to get it re-signed with the new tenant, but, yeah.
Thanks.
Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I am too struggling with this a bit, but I believe that our hands are tied when you guys see the bylaw. But the options that you have presented to us, Janine, are pretty clear-cut as to what needs to happen from this point on, fortunately.
Is there possibilities of compromise if we were to set it off to the side to discussion, to be brought back to Council next council?
It would be up to Council, yeah. I think there's been cases in the past that it's been done, but it may have been done under the previous bylaw.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. I know this is my second shot, so I got to get it all right this time. What does it mean, and maybe this is a question for the city clerk, if we were to waive these fees? We can do that with a motion here tonight, but I'm not sure that we want to. I guess what I'm trying to say is, to me, this is a zero-sum game. It's all or nothing. I don't want to start creating new fee structures inside of it. So, I just want to make sure that if a motion gets put on the floor tonight to waive the fees, that we do it correctly, so it is a one-time-only thing there. Sorry for all the technical jargon.
Yeah, and I guess hopefully always when we do our resolutions, they're done correctly. You prob, I believe you can, unless there's something, and I don't know the zoning bylaw well enough to be able to speak to the zoning bylaw, but if there is an allowance to waive fees in the bylaw?
Not that I'm aware of.
So, you're in contravention of your bylaw, so I would say you cannot make a motion that contravenes your bylaw.
Right. Okay.
Mr. Corrigan?
Just to follow up on that, then. I mean, we really don't have an option here because we'd be in contravention to the bylaw. So, in reality, we have to deny the request. What would be our steps from here, then?
She would have to make application for a new contract zone in order to comply with the zoning bylaw.
And there really isn't any other way around this, then, is there?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Just curious from, I guess, our city clerk or our city manager, there must be another option, or why did it come to us? I guess this is my question.
Council of Enbetches came to accept a request from the applicant.
Right.
To have this discussed in front of Council. That's why it's in front of you guys tonight for discussion.
We're being told there is no option. There is no compromise?
That's what we're going through. The bylaw does not state that that way.
Did you want to, or did somebody want to move to set it aside to discuss, not make a decision tonight, just set it aside till next council?
Yes, Your Worship, I'd like to suggest that we table this until the next council meeting, and then further discussion or investigation into what other options there may be, Cindy, if there is any for sure.
Thank you.
Your Worship.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. That's what I was going to ask. I will second that motion if it is in fact a motion.
Call the question on the, the motion of tabling. Until next meeting. All in favor? Carrie DeNambly.
Yeah, I want to. She doesn't know I'm going to do this, but just something to consider. She provides a service. She won a Wayback Award, and I know Waverne supports small business. So, just as long as that's taken under consideration, because I know a few people in town too. So, and I know Waverne supports small business.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So, we will table, it's been tabled till next council for further investigation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discretionary use development permit, young fellows. Did you want to step aside?
Your Worship, with your permission, I will regretfully recuse myself from this discussion, as it does put me in conflict of interest.
We'll come and get you in a few minutes. Janine?
Okay. So, discretionary use development permit application has been received for an open-air concert at Jubilee Park on June 30 of this year, and it's hosted by the Waverne Young Fellows. The subject property is Jubilee Park at 583 13th Street, bound by First Avenue Northeast to the South, Fifth Street to the West, Douglas Road to the North, and 13th Street to the East. Jubilee Park is home to a variety of community, recreation, and sport facilities, including soccer fields, tennis courts, baseball diamonds, the leisure center, and the Spark Center. The zoning bylaw contains regulations regarding temporary uses and separates them into low-impact and high-impact uses, with open-air rock concert and similar attractions being considered high-impact uses. Zoning bylaw requires that open-air rock concerts and similar attractions require development permit and follow the discretionary use process. The Waverne Young Fellows are hosting the outdoor concert as part of their 100th anniversary celebrations. The event will also have tents set up in Jubilee Park for beer gardens and food stations. So, discretionary use neighborhood notice is required to be sent out to all property owners within a 75-meter radius of the subject property, which notifies them of the application and the opportunity to provide their concerns and feedback to Council. No comments or concerns from the neighborhood notices have been received to date. A few calls have been received expressing their support for the event. So, I've included a map of the proposed event and where they're going to have the stage specifically. So, it'll be kind of in that semicircle in the middle of the park. The outdoor concert is proposed to take place in Jubilee Park with the stage located centrally within the park, seating within the circular path area, and food beverage stations around the perimeter. The event will take place on June 30, and is proposed to start at about 4:30 with the first music acts starting at approximately 6:00 PM. The applicants are planning on the concert being wrapped up by 11:00 PM to mitigate any noise complaints once quiet hours start according to the noise bylaw. The official community plan, the proposed event, is consistent with the OCP, as it encourages the use of parks and public spaces to include year-round activities such as annual festivals and special events. The zoning bylaw, Section 5.9, regulates temporary uses and classifies them into two categories. Open-air rock concerts and similar attractions are considered high-impact, and they're required to go through this discretionary use process. Section 5.9.3 provides standards for temporary uses, which require that high-impact uses meet the following conditions: that they have adequate washroom facilities and onsite parking; required landscaping and parking areas for the principal use may not be occupied by the temporary use; events shall not obstruct pedestrian or vehicular circulation, including site triangles; adequate refuse containers shall be made available, and the site must be kept clean. Upon completion, all structures associated material and signage must be removed, and the site left in a neat and tidy condition. Temporary uses are permitted for a maximum of three days. The temporary use is only for one day, June 30, with setup potentially starting one day before on the 29. So, the decision options before Council would be option number one, to approve the development permit 2022.013 for an open-air concert at Jubilee Park on June 30, subject to the following conditions: placement of all structures, including tents, generators, staging, bleachers, etc., shall be to the satisfaction of the Leisure Services Department; and inspection from the Fire Department shall be required upon installation of tents and associated structures or equipment. The applicants shall obtain required approvals and licenses from the Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority for the serving and consumption of alcohol on-site. Arrangements must be made for adequate washroom facilities, including a minimum of 20 washrooms with two barrier-free. Arrangements must be made for parking on-site, and for shuttles to provide drop-off and pickup from designated parking areas in the city. Adequate refuse containers shall be provided on-site, and it must be kept clean. And upon completion of the event, all structures associated material and signage shall be removed, and the site left in a neat and tidy condition. Or option number two would be to refuse the development permit, and the reasons for refusal would have to be provided in the motion made tonight. The proposal complies with the requirements of zoning bylaw in terms of temporary use requirements, washrooms, refuse containers, timeframe, etc. The proposed use is consistent with the intent of the park to be used for community events and uses, and the area is large enough to accommodate the event. Therefore, staff are recommending option number one, to approve the discretionary use development application with the conditions listed in option number one. The other thing I will note to Council is they do have a backup plan in case of bad weather or super-wet conditions, and that would be at the Ag Society Exhibition Ground, so. And the Waverne Young Fellows have representatives here tonight if you guys have any questions about the event, so.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your Worship, I'll make a motion that the discretionary use development permit 2022.013 from the Waverne Young Fellows to hold an open-air concert in Jubilee Park at 583 13th Street on June 30, 2022 be approved with the presented conditions.
Second?
Your Worship, I'll second that motion.
Questions? Go ahead.
No questions. Just kudos. Thanks, you guys. This is awesome. I'm looking forward to it. You talk about an economic engine. I've rented my basement out three times already for the night of June 30, so this is going to be a big deal. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, kudos for sure. And then I was just going to suggest also, or ask, maybe this is, as Counsel Richard says, such a great economic benefit for the City of Waverne. It's also a huge tourism thing. And I was wondering if you've connected with the tourism department to see if you can kind of work together. They can help you out a little bit, and, because there's certainly, if you're going to try and sell, whatever the number is, 3,000 tickets, there's a third of those people are going to have to come from out of town, I'm thinking, so.
Yes, thank you, Council. Your Worship, we have been working with Waverne Tourism throughout this process, so, yeah.
Mr. Mickle?
It's, you know, over the years I've been in this chair, every time the young fellows came, I stood up and clapped because I meant you brought money for our community, and I mean that seriously. It's our turn to repay. So, only if you go onstage and sing, Todd, other than that, it could be canceled?
Once you pay your ticket and I see full coverage of that, we'll get up there and sing for you, Mr. Mickle.
Thanks, Todd.
I would, I would, I know that you, Janine, you had said in here that the quiet time is 11. I thought our bylaw just basically said, you know, or if the time, in the noise disturbs people. I would hope that people understand what is going on here and this, what it is, and don't start phoning in at 8 o'clock at night. Because I remember when they had, the one time we had the theater in the park, we had people complaining and going, these are, this is what it means to live in next-door park. This is what it means when there's an event on. You cannot be phoning in.
Yeah, and that's part of the reason we send these types of uses through discretionary use, because then we require the neighborhood notices to be sent out, and I did not receive anything back from those. And they went out to about 160 houses, so.
So, they have their chance to speak, and now, so. Okay, very good, very good. Call the question. All in favor? Carrie DeNambly. Do you want to go to Mr. Jensen, please? Discretionary use development permit billboard. Janine?
Okay, I might lose my voice by the end of the night. So, we've got a discretionary use development permit application that's been received for the placement of a digital billboard sign at 53 Government Road Southwest, which is the Travel Lodge property. The sign would be located on private property, and billboards on private property require Council approval under the zoning bylaw. The sign is proposed to be located in, at the northeastern corner of the hotel. The applicants had previously applied in November of 2021 for a billboard in a different location on the property. However, the application did not comply with the zoning bylaw and was refused by Council for that reason. The applicant has since worked with staff on a location that would meet the zoning bylaw requirements and submitted a new application. As a discretionary use, a neighborhood notice is required to be sent to all property owners within a 75-meter radius of the property. No comments or concerns from the neighborhood notices have been received. Additionally, the previous application was circulated to applicable agencies and departments for comment, given the proximity to two major highways. Comments were received and will be discussed later in this report. So, I've included their site plan of where the location will be, and then their sign elevation. So, it stands at about eight meters tall. And they've also shown the location as you would see it from the traffic view, coming south on Government Road facing the Travel Lodge. So, that's a little bit helpful for everyone to see what it might look like. The subject property is located at the intersection of Government Road or Highway 35 and Sims Avenue, with Highway 39 directly north of Sims Avenue. The property is located within the major arterial commercial zone, and the MAC zone is one of the zones that allows for billboards on private land. The zoning bylaw sets out the required setbacks for billboards on private land, and requires that no portion of a billboard sign be located within 23 meters of an intersection of streets, and that is measured from the intersection of the property lines. The zoning bylaw has requirements for setbacks to intersections for these types of signs to ensure that sightlines are preserved for visibility and safety purposes. Additionally, these types of sides, signs can create distractions for drivers on the streets and can become a safety hazard when located too close to an intersection, especially the digital signs that have changing messaging on them. The applicant is proposing that the billboard be located 0.3 meters from the north property line and 30 meters from the east property line, which meets the requirements for setbacks by the zoning bylaw. The proposed billboard complies with the maximum height and the maximum size of the sign face. The previous application was circulated by the Planning Department to the Ministry of Highways for comment, due to the proximity of the billboard to two major highways. The Ministry of Highways comments are provided. That include that it should not impede sightlines of motorists, have a minimum display of 30 seconds, should not include animations between frames, should be equipped with sensors to measure ambient lighting, and have a maximum brightness of 3.2 CD per square meters above ambient lighting, and should default to a black screen if a malfunction or failure occurs, and should not in any way resemble an official sign or traffic light standard to avoid confusion by motorists. The Ministry also advised that setbacks are to be as per the City of Waverne bylaws, since it is located within the city limits. The Ministry- The Ministry will not be responsible for any damages to the signs resulting from the Ministry's regular maintenance, and the applicant is responsible for all expenses for removal of the sign if it's required for road widening or service roads through future development. The billboard is now proposed to comply with the setbacks required in the zoning bylaw and is proposed to be on the northeast side of the hotel, on the Sims Avenue side of the property. So the billboard will be approximately 30 meters from the intersection of Highway 35 and 39, so the sightlines of the intersection should not be impacted. Comments from the Ministry have been incorporated into the recommended conditions if this permit is approved. So the decision options, option number one would be to approve development permit 2022.012 for a billboard at 53 Government Road, subject to the following conditions: must comply with the setback requirements of the zoning bylaw; the sign shall not have any distracting devices, including but not limited to strobe lights, flashing lights, animations between frames, or live video; no direct illumination that impedes vehicular traffic or interferes with traffic signals; it shall not impede the flow of floodwaters in a flood event; the sign shall be equipped with sensors to measure ambient lighting; the sign shall have a maximum brightness above ambient lighting; the sign shall default to a black screen if a malfunction or failure occurs; this applicant shall submit to the city a completed survey of the billboard location after construction to verify that setbacks are met, and the Ministry of Highways and the City of Weyburn will not be responsible for any damages to the signs resulting from regular maintenance, and the applicant is responsible for all expenses for removal of the sign if it is required for road widening or service roads through future development. Option number two would be to refuse the development permit, and the reasons would have to be provided by the person making the motion. The proposal complies with the requirements of zoning bylaw in terms of setbacks, height, and size. The proposed location is not expected to have a negative impact on sightlines or traffic and safety, as it complies with the setback requirements from the intersection. Therefore, staff are recommending option number one, to approve the discretionary use development application with the conditions listed in option number one.
Your worship, I make a motion that development permit application 2022.012 for a billboard at 53 Government Road South be approved, subject to the presented conditions.
I'll second that, your worship.
No questions, but great work on this. I know that they came to us once before, and it probably wasn't the easiest thing in the world to go back and coordinate getting this proposal resubmitted so that it does meet all of our requirements, so, great job.
Thank you, your worship. Janine, I know I asked this before, but the first time around, we consulted with the Chief of Police. Did he have any concerns with the modifications?
No, I think ideally, we would want it in a different location, but it's always that the highest traffic locations are where they want these billboards, so now that it complies with the requirements, there is less concerns with the impact, yeah.
Mr. Richard?
Yep.
Just very good work on all this, Janine, and as we said, we tabled it, you came back, and we've got it through. Call a question, all in favor? Carrie, do you have an answer? Again, very good work on all this. Yes, you're very, you're going to lose your voice here tonight. Discretionary use permit tire shop, go ahead.
Okay. Discretionary use development permit application has been received from Daniel Martins for the change of use to a tire repair shop, and in addition, at 1632 First Avenue Northeast. The site is currently zoned MAC, Major Arterial Commercial, and a tire repair shop is considered discretionary use in that zone. They are proposing to build an approximately 650-square-foot addition. The property is located on First Avenue Northeast, the service road, just east of 16th Street. The applicant is proposing to change the use of the existing building from a car wash to a tire repair shop, and the addition will be, become part of the tire repair shop as well. The total building area will be approximately 1,606 square feet. I've included the aerial imagery of the property and where they're proposing the addition and the zoning bylaw map. They've submitted a site plan showing all of the setbacks and where the parking will be proposed, and where the addition will be, and then some elevation drawings as to what it will look like, or what it's proposed to look like. A neighborhood notice was sent out to all residents within a 75-meter radius. Those notices were sent on April 8th. No comments or concerns have been received. Section 3.6 of the OCP sets out policies and objectives for the Major Arterial Commercial Land Use Designation, which applies to the subject property. The designation is intended to accommodate a range of retail, commercial, health facilities, service stations, larger restaurants, and light industrial land uses. The MAC areas are designed to accommodate the needs of automobile-oriented retail and commercial businesses, which require onsite parking areas. The proposal is consistent with the policies in the OCP. The MAC Zone is designed to provide for the development of retail, service, and office businesses, serving the traveling public and residents. The proposal is for 650-square-foot addition to the existing 1,056-square-foot building, for a total building floor area of 1,706 square feet, which will be used as a tire repair shop. The addition is proposed to meet all required setbacks, and six parking spaces are proposed, which exceeds the four parking spaces that would be required under the bylaw. There's residential zoning to the south of the property and MAC on both sides of the property. The property has previously been used as various service uses since the 1980s, including a gas station, car wash, and a service garage, so the use is consistent with previous uses of the property. A fenced area is proposed to the rear of the building for storage. Given that the residential zoning to the south of the property, staff would recommend that a condition of approval be that any outdoor storage be screened from residentially-zoned properties to minimize potential visual and noise impacts. The proposed addition complies with the maximum height, maximum floor area ratio, and minimum setback requirements in the zoning bylaw. The off-site development levy would be applied to the addition as per the bylaw. Therefore, the off-site development levies would be $2,931.50 for the addition and would be a condition of the development permit approval. Council's options would be option number one, to approve the development permit for a change of use in addition to a tire repair shop at 1632 First Avenue without further conditions. Option number two would be to approve the development permit, subject to the following conditions: a minimum of four off-street parking spaces shall be provided onsite; a barrier-free path must be provided for the barrier-free parking stall to the barrier-free entrance to the building; parking areas must be maintained as dust-free, gravelled, or hard-surfaced area; any outdoor storage shall be screened by a solid wall or fence of at least 1.83 meters high, and in no case lower than the height of the materials stored, to a maximum height of 2.44 meters. Off-site development levies totaling $2,931.50 shall be due upon development permit issuance. A building permit shall be required, and a City of Weyburn business license shall be obtained prior to operation. Option number three would be to refuse the development permit, and those reasons would have to be provided by the officer making the motion tonight. So the staff recommendation, the development permit meets the requirements of zoning bylaw in terms of use, parking, height, and building setbacks. Therefore, staff are recommending option two, to approve the discretionary use development permit 2022.014, with the conditions listed above.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I will make the motion, Janine. I'll read it nice and slow, so you can catch your breath between these. I'd like to make the motion that the development permit application 2022.014 for a change of use and addition to a tire repair shop at 1632 First Avenue Northeast be approved, subject to the conditions presented.
Second?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Seeing none? Call a question, all in favor? Carrie, do you have an answer? Last one, Janine. Mobile vendor and concessions policy.
Okay, so the City of Weyburn began to see an influx in mobile food trucks and vendors requesting to operate in the city around 2015 to 2016, which led to a mobile food concessions policy being implemented in 2016. The original policy required that all mobile food concessions receive development permit approval, and all mobile vendors on city-owned property receive council approval. The policy didn't contain standards and conditions that apply to mobile food vendors. However, there were many conditions applied to the development permit approvals. The requirement to receive council approval for any mobile vendors operating on city-owned property has led to issues when it comes to user groups hosting events at city parks that involve food trucks and the timing of approvals. The Planning Department and Leisure Services Department have been working together to find a better process to follow that does not take us long for approval and enables user groups and mobile vendors to use the city parks more easily. The Planning Department has drafted a new mobile vendors and concessions policy to address the concerns that have been raised from the previous policy. Staff have also included more standard requirements for operations to provide more information to potential mobile vendors about the required process and the regulations that the city has for their operations. The policy has been created in consultation with other city departments, including Leisure Services, Engineering, Fire, and Police. The intent will be to ensure applicable departments are circulated when new permit applications come in, to ensure any concerns can be addressed. Additionally, Leisure Services will be consulted on any permits involving city-owned property to coordinate with user groups and minimize scheduling conflicts. Major changes to the policy include the addition of standard conditions for mobile vendors, including permitted locations, refuse disposal, inspections, and approvals, power, water, etc. The requirement for council approval on city-owned land has been removed. Permits will still be required, however, the development officer can approve them, so the timelines for approval are reduced. Mobile vendors will be permitted to operate on city streets, provided they comply with the applicable sections of the policy. Previously, we've allowed this, but it's been on an ad hoc basis and not very common. The new policy will provide more guidance to city departments reviewing applications and to the applicants with clear standard requirements for operations of mobile vendors, and provide streamlined approval processes. If approved, this policy would replace the previous policy that was approved in 2016. So the decision options would be option number one, to approve the mobile vendors and concessions policy as proposed, and repeal the existing mobile concessions policy that was approved by Resolution 2016-66C. Option number two would be to refuse to approve the mobile vendors and concession policy and direct staff to amend the policy as recommended, and the recommended amendments should be provided by council. The staff recommendation would be that council approves the new mobile vendors and concessions policy as proposed, and repeal the existing mobile concessions policy.
Do you have a motion?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that council approved the mobile vendors and concessions policy to repeal and replace the mobile concession policy approved on August the 15th, 2016, by Resolution 2016-66C.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion?
Thank you, your worship. Not so much a question, Janine, but thank you so much for all your hard work on this and making it a streamlined process. Hopefully, more vendors will visit Weyburn. I know Lowbrow started out as a food truck, and they're now a permanent resident, so hopefully, this is creating a trend.
Any other comments? Seeing none? Call a question, all in favor? Carrie, do you have an answer? Yes, Janine, thank you for all your work on this, this meeting here today. Inquiries and announcements, anything from council? Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to remind everybody that the library book sale is going on. It starts on Thursday, so bring your bags, bring your boxes. I've already been downstairs, and there are a lot of books waiting to find new homes, so thank you in advance for all the support.
That's starting Thursday? Okay.
It will be during library hours, 9:30 to 8:00, and will run Thursday, Friday, and all day Saturday.
I'll address this question either to the city manager or to Jennifer, but I've received a number of questions about the snow piled up in the middle of residential neighborhoods. I know that you've communicated that before, but can I impose upon you to do so again?
To comment on it?
Yeah, just why it was done that way.
Oh, okay. So with a snowstorm like we had, not this weekend, but the previous weekend, our main goal was to make sure that we could get passable lanes for people to get in and out of their streets. So although leaving the snow to pack down would have worked for, you know, trucks and higher SUVs, it was not working for small cars. So our biggest goal was to get out there, get the residents' accesses to their house through the cars, and then we did leave a lot of windrows. Any significant windrows throughout the week, we worked at going back and getting a lot of those windrows either tightened up a little or removed completely within the staff that we had, so we continued on that weekend prep for the most recent snowstorm. And then we were actually fortunate to not get that big dump of snow, but get a little bit of rain, which actually reduced the windrows. But the main thing was to make sure that there was access on the streets and to ensure that people could actually get down their streets, and we know that it did increase some tight areas for people with their parking and such, but it's kind of one of those things with that massive of a snowstorm. Our biggest goal was just making sure that we could have passable lanes through the city for people.
All right, that's perfect, thank you. Sounds like a solid plan, so...
I have one there. Light it up 4H HD is a global awareness-raising initiative to take place in May to help shine the light on Huntington's disease and the impact it has on our community. Huntington's disease is a generic brain disorder that affects a person's ability to control their movements, recall events, make decisions, and control their emotions. So from May 1st to the 7th, City Hall will be lit up in blue lights to raise awareness for Huntington's disease. Again, hopefully, that is it for the snow this year, the snow until November, October, hopefully, November, December, we won't have to see any more of this. We are raising the worrisome about flooding, as we've heard. Go ahead, Mr. Michael, go ahead and say... I'm going to make a comment, a snow removal. On residential streets, there's no easy answers. The only way you're going to fix that, if you have a ton of money, to get out there and do it, and we haven't got that. But what we did over this last storm, it was something different, but it worked. People at least had access to get out. It wasn't the best, maybe not, however, again, residential streets have always been an issue, and to solve that problem, it takes a lot of generation of equipment, manpower, money, whatever, but it's something to look on and look forward to, maybe, but it's not that the city isn't doing anything. They're out there. They've proven that. But residential streets are, I'm sorry to say, they're the last ones we get to, and that's the downside, but hopefully, we can be creative with something else, and you move on.
Mr. Warren, did you want to say anything about, like, the possibility of flooding, that we really aren't looking forward to that again?
Yeah, your worship, we're working with the War Security Agency for updates on that. We reached out to them this week already, and they're addressing the concerns for flooding in this area. We'll continue to reach out to them, because you don't know if there will be more major snowstorms or rain events happening between now and June, July, right, preparing ourselves for that. But as of right now, there is no concern being provided by the War Security Agency, but through our Engineering Department, we'll continue to reach out to them and provide updates to council, and we always ask them to provide updates to the media and to the public as well. I know that War Security Agency does provide updates on a regular basis that way, so...
And I asked you that simply because there was, a few people sent me pictures, and they were concerned, and they've sent me pictures of Winnipeg and Manitoba and vehicles underwater and everything, and we don't have that to worry about, so, thank you. We appreciate, we'll keep everybody in the loop as things, if things change onto any of that. Thanks to all the city staff, all the city administration, all the city works, all the staff that pass that on, that we got through these, there were trying weeks here with the weather, and we'll move forward into summer. With that, we are, there's no notice of motions, and so we will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.